Does hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll notice that there's no mayor tonight. She's away, and I haven't led a meeting in a long time. So if you want to get in on the under-over bet of how many mistakes I'm going to make tonight, so I'll do my best I can to lead the meeting. And if I'm going to screw something up, we'll just skip it till next month, and you guys can come back. So having said that, if you'll say the pledge allegiance with me, I appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renata, can you take the role, please?
Mayor Reed. Vice Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Will there be additions, deletions, modifications for this evening? Have none. Next is announcements and presentations. I'm going to do that after. We'll do the annual comprehensive financial report with our finance administration, and then we're going to do something else.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Arian Pantak. I am the finance administrator. Tonight, we have a presentation of the fiscal year 2022 annual comprehensive report, and would like to introduce her, Ms. Garzon, who is with our auditing firm. Sorry, thank you. Markham, and he'll provide a brief presentation on our final results.
Good evening, city council members and city manager. Thank you for having me. Before I start, I just want to say that Moses Arises, who is the audit engagement partner, sends his regards. He's out of the country, so I'll be speaking or presenting on his behalf. And I'm here to present the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year 2022. And part of your agenda package, you all should have received, the annual comprehensive report, so feel free to follow along. It's a pretty lengthy document, so I'll try to just go through the highlighted areas here. So I would like to start with printed page number one, which is our independent auditor's report. I would like to mention that if you compare this report to last year, that you'll see a major change in the format. There was a standard SAS 134, not to bore you, just changed the format. So it's to emphasize the opinion paragraph, which is now the first paragraph that you'll see on the first page. It used to be on the second or third page. So as I'll go ahead and read, the first paragraph states what we've actually audited. We audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information for the city of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year 302022. The second paragraph is actually the opinion, and I'll go ahead and read that. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the government activities, major funds, aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September 30 of 2022, and the respective changes in the financial position in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. That's what we considered an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, is actually the highest regard one can attain at the conclusion of any financial statement audit. So congratulations again to the city, and I think that's a testament for the oversight of the finance department as well. If you would like to follow along with me to the next section, I just briefly want to touch upon, as I mentioned earlier, this is a pretty lengthy document, about 173 pages. And I always recommend, if you don't want to read the entire document, you could always start with the management discussion and analysis, which is the M D N A. The great, and that's on printed page five through 17. The great thing about this section is it's actually written by your finance department, so it's from the words of your own staff, and it gives you a quantitative and qualitative information. So it gives you the amounts. It compares your 2022, the year that's been audited, to 2021, and it tells you the quantitative changes, so any significant fluctuations in amounts. But more importantly, it tells you why those amounts have changed. If you follow along with me to printed page 19, I just wanted to highlight that this is the statement of activities. This essentially tells you the revenues and expenses that the city has incurred overall during the year. And I just want to point out that there was a change in net position. Net position is just your ending equity, if you will, and you had an increase of about $29 million, which is pretty fruitful for the year. And that's due to a combination of getting significant grant funding during the year. It's also based on your permit, I think, permit, building permit activity, property taxes, and sales tax all increased during 2022. So I thought it was worth mentioning. If you follow along with me to printed page 160, in addition to our independent auditor's report that I just referred to, given the clean opinion for the year, we also have additional independent auditor's reports over different segments of the audit that's required by government auditing standards. So on page 60, it's the independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. So this is the report that would essentially tell you at the conclusion of the audit if we identified any deficiencies or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the audit. We're happy to report that we have not. And then also, aside from the financial information we audit, we also do reviews of your, you know, interlocal agreements, things that relate to more compliance and actual numbers. And we didn't note any noncompliance matters at this time. And if you follow along with me to printed page 162, this is the independent auditor's report on the compliance over your major federal programs. So this independent auditor's report only exists when the city expends more than $750,000 in either federal or state funding. So the fact that we actually populated this report just means that the city was actually subject to a federal single audit, so not a state single audit, so meaning that, meaning you expended more than $750,000. And most of that, the major program that we selected for the year was relating to your ARPA funds, so the Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds for the year. That was the big-ticket item for most cities this year. So at the conclusion of the single audit, we didn't see, we didn't noted any noncompliance matters or any audit findings relating to the single audit component of the overall audit of the city. If you follow along with me to page 170, this is the management letter in accordance with the rules with the Auditor General and State of Florida. This report essentially will let you know if we've identified any prior year audit findings. This is where we would actually document any resolutions of those prior year audit findings. And I think the only thing here, what I would like to conclude with is the last document, which was separate and apart from the annual comprehensive financial report. It's our communications letter. So that should have been a separate document that was emailed to the city council as well. And at the end of the conclusion of the audit, we're required to actually provide this communications letter to those charged with governance, AKA the city council, finance department, city manager. And here, we would actually detail out any significant accounting policies that you may have, any disagreements with management difficulties that we encountered during the audit, any significant audit findings as well will be actually written here as well. So we're happy to report that there were none, as I mentioned earlier. And that would conclude at least my presentation on the annual comprehensive financial report and also the communications letter. If any of the council members have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer at this time.
Anybody?
Nope.
Arian? Well, good?
Good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys will forgive me, I'm going to back up just one second because it's the anniversary of one of our officers that passed away many years ago. And for you guys that don't know, I was a police officer here for most of my adult life, and I was a motor cop for 10. So I'd like to read something to you because we're huge in supporting our local law enforcement, our first responders, and our veterans. So if you guys will bear with me. Today, we remember Palm Beach Gardens Police Department Officer William Stephen Matthews for his dedicated service to the residents of the city. Officer William Matthews was aged 31, ID 117, was killed in the line of duty on Friday the 13th, 1979. Officer Matthews was en route to work on his police motorcycle when he received a call of a potential DUI driver in the area of I-95 near PGA Boulevard. He had driven alongside the vehicle in an attempt to motion the driver to pull over, but the driver swerved into his lane and struck the motorcycle. His motorcycle then left roadway and struck a utility pole. Officer Matthews died right there at the scene. The driver fled the scene but was arrested at a nearby gas station. The man was charged with driving while intoxicated, leaving the scene of a fatal accident, and improper change of lane. Officer Matthews was survived by his wife, son, and daughter. So that's a long time ago, but if we can just respect him and give him a few minutes of silence, I'm sure him and his family would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. We will now have an update of the Nest Par Three Golf Course at Sand Hill Crane. Will Cassie, please, come up?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. For the record, Casey Mitchell, general manager at Sand Hill Crane Golf Club, and I am happy to announce that Sand Hill Crane, the addition, the Nest, is open as of this week. The driving range went live yesterday, and the golf course will go live August 9th on Wednesday. As of right now, we will remain closed Mondays and Tuesdays for the rest of the summer season, and then once we get into season, we will open seven days a week. Wednesdays and Thursdays, the everyday, Wednesday through Sunday, will be open 9:00 AM to 7:30 PM, which will be the last ball sold. Food and beverage last call will be at 8:00, and the facilities will close at 8:30. Saturday and Sunday, food and beverage service will start at 9:00 AM, and then during the week, it will start, it will be 9:00 to 3:00, will be grab and go, and then at 3:00 PM, we will start service from the cafe. So for those of you who like the top golf or drive shack feel, come see us. We have 18 covered driving range bays with TrackMan technology, and we hope to see you guys out there soon.
We do want to talk on this.
Okay.
We have, I'm not going to, go ahead. Who, Marcy, you have anything to say on this? I have a lot to say, but.
Sure.
Yeah, right?
We all attended, all up here, attended the grand opening ribbon cutting. You guys did a tremendous job. Thank you guys so much for that, putting that together. What a wonderful facility. For someone who doesn't have time for golf but loves this sport, it is amazing, awesome, so much fun, and I can't wait to play again out there. It was great. I really welcome everyone to join in and try it out and go check it out for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, same comment. Can you send us the schedule?
Absolutely.
That you just talked about?
Yes.
So we can kind of know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Out there so we can come out and play. No, the course is great. I just wish there was more 50-foot canopy trees around there.
It was hot.
Fans on the greens, you know, whatever you want to do.
We're working on that.
Sell towels, you know, wet towels. I'm good with all that.
Pool in the middle.
Yeah, whatever, pool in the middle, whatever you need to do. But no, it's a cool, it's really a cool venue. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And much success. It's going to be, really need to be out there.
Yeah, congratulations, Casey. You and your team did a phenomenal job on Monday. I know you've been itching to get out there for months and months, and it's just beautiful. Your staff was attentive, and, you know, showcased the property and amenities very, very well. It was such a pleasure to be out there, and I'm sure everyone can't wait to get out there when it opens, you know, tomorrow and then August night. So congratulations.
So I wanted this put on the agenda because I play a lot of golf. This place is amazing. And this par three next to the sand hill with this clubhouse is ridiculous, and I wanted to make sure we took the time on this particular project, even though we have a lot of projects going on, to thank the staff on this particular nest project. Because this encompassed with the sand hill, you're not going to get a tee time for months. And then the training facilities, the sports bar mixed with the, I hate to even call it top golf-like, we got to figure its title and where it fits. But I'm giddy about it, and I'm sure I won't be able to get on it. So thank you, thank you for all the staff. And I was actually going to read every name on here because I thought it was going to be 20, and I was going to indulge my council members to bear with me. But now that I've learned it's 40 or 50, this was the approach we took.
There were a lot of people that made this actually come true.
Yeah.
Finance, Candace and her team, H R, I mean, the number of people that we've hired in the last six months to complement the additional facilities, obviously your support, Ron, Steve, David, our administrator Angela, who really worked hard on the building, Todd, who did all of the site work. There are a lot of hands in this, so.
I almost want to call Todd the ghost because he's kind of like, we never really thank him enough, but when something goes wrong, like the traffic signal, he digs in. And, you know, specifically you, Todd, thank you for picking up the ball all around the city all year long, and you never get recognized out here. So thank you for everything you guys done. We love it. We love being a part of this, and this one was a no-brainer. I'm glad it came along, and I will be out there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We also have a pizza oven coming soon, so.
Right on. Bert, pizza oven?
I'm all in.
Long as you have an ice bath out there, too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is comment from the publics, and I do not have any. So now we have the city manager report. Ron?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor and Council, I do have one item to bring to your attention you're totally aware of, but just for the public's knowledge, on Thursday, June 8th, we did send a memo to the mayor and council calling to your attention the Oaks Park pickleball situation, and we met individually as well. We received some information from all across the nation doing some additional research of the troubles in residential areas where pickleball courts are located. Apparently, the sound of the ball hitting the paddle carries quite well. So we sat down and rethought about what we were doing. So it gave serious consideration to the disruptive nature in residential areas of the pickleball play. So at that point, we looked at and decided to relocate the pickleball court with your permission, of course. The courts, the bathrooms, the lighting, parking lot expansion. We wanted to move that from Oak Park to Lilac Park Soccer Field. Why? The soccer field at Lilac has been underutilized, and why, a very rarely needs to use the field, so it's basically just a rental field, totally underutilized. So what we did was look at Lilac Park and see what resources we had there. They have bathroom facilities already. The soccer field has athletic lighting already, more than enough for pickleball. And not only can we relocate the 12 pickleball facilities that was due to go to Oak Park, but we can add 12 more for a total of 24, plus some shade structures inside. And we can do it with a budgeted amount that you approved back in March. So we will also be designing an entry road and additional parking to facilitate, and that will be pervious and impervious parking as well. The construction is scheduled to begin at the end of this month in July. Projected date of completion, we're saying by the end of the year, if not sooner. And you all have been informed of this, and I just wanted to make sure we made a public announcement as to what we're doing and why, for transparency and information's sake. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Any comments on that? Can we get through one meeting without bringing up pickleball?
We just did.
No, we didn't.
I do have a comment, though. I want to say thank you, Ron, and to your team, staff. I really appreciate. I know the Oaks development, our neighborhood, have always been a little bit concerned about an active use across the way, and for years and years and years. I think I know we've tried to put some things there in the past, and it didn't go over well with them, and you guys took the time to meet with them. You showed them what you were planning on doing. You heard and listened to their comments, and you all got together and came up with an even better solution. So it's amazing how just listening to the community and to each other, the, you know, the outreach and everything that you did, it really resulted in a much better compromise, but a better solution. And look, we have even more courts, and I just want to say thank you to everyone that took the time and effort to go out and talk to them. That was really a great, a great thing to do. So thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. From one fabulous project to the next. Awesome. Next is consent. I wanted Bert to pull something and read it, but if he's not going to do that, there's nothing going to be pulled. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent as is.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Oh, second, sorry.
I'll second it.
Second mistake, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the police officer thing was two, sorry. All right, tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Resolution 38, 2023, a planned community development, P C D amendment. Resolution 39, 2023, Panther National Site Plan Approval. Resolution 42, 2023, Site Plan Approval for Single Family Home Subdivision. Resolution 43, 2023, a planned community development, P C D amendment. Resolution 45, 2023, a planned unit development, P U D amendment. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony and hearings and the materials which are in the official city file on this application and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to cross-examine any of the witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentation and will be permitted in order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out the card and give it to the city clerk over here to our left. The clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases. Renata, thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
So Ordinance 10, 2023, it's a non-quasi-judicial. Renata, can you read the title, please?
Ordinance 10, 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations at Section 78-159 Permitted Uses, Minor and Major Conditional Uses and Prohibited Uses, by amending Table 21, Permitted, Conditional, and Prohibited Use Chart in order to prohibit adult arcades and/or internet cafes, and by adopting new subsection J 79 to adopt regulations to prohibit simulated gambling devices, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Open the hearing. Has anything changed since our first reading?
There was, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor, there was one minor change. There was a provision here that originally, that one of the violations down here in B2, I believe it was, it was originally listed at $250 a day in error, and so I made it match the others and made it $1,000, like the one above it. So I wanted to point that out to you, that that was one minor change between first and second reading. It was an oversight on my part on the original first draft. But other than that, there have been no changes.
I don't have anybody wishing to speak on this item. I do not have any comment cards. When I close the hearing, can I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 10, 2023.
Bring it back for discussion, guys.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on this?
No, Max, thanks for catching that. We like the upward movement in that number. So thank you for being consistent on that across the board. Appreciate it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Ordinance 13, 2023, Renata, please.
Ordinance 13, 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, annexing pursuant to a petition for voluntary annexation, one parcel of real property comprising a total of 2.48 acres, more or less located on the west side of Ellison Wilson Road, approximately 0.16 miles south of the intersection of PGA Boulevard and Ellison Wilson Road in Palm Beach County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation petition bears the signatures of the owners of the real property annexed hereby, amending Article 2 of the city charter by redefining the corporate limits, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, the Palm Beach County Clerk of Court, and Palm Beach County, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
We have Pat.
Pat Lantini.
Hi, Pat.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. For the record, Pat Lantini, I'm here representing the voluntary annexation for the Regelman property. It's a 2.48-acre parcel of land that's about 0.16 acres, excuse me, miles south of PGA and Ellison Wilson Road. This perspective shows the previously approved annexed property as well as a P U D Site Plan Application that was previously approved in the city. The area in red is the 2.48-acre site that is being annexed into the city of Palm Beach Gardens this evening, hopefully. As you can see here in the red, this is the 2.48-acre. The property in yellow is the previously approved Ritz-Carlton residence that was approved at the early part of this year. Annexation will increase the property area of the Marina overlay. The property land use and zoning will be modified to the Palm Beach Gardens Land Development Code. The 2.4-acre site will be part of the Ritz-Carlton residential property. The overall P U Ds and Site Plan Amendment will be filed after the first reading by city council. The future development of this project will be of the quality of the Phase One development. That's it. Unless you have any questions.
Martin, do, are we, you going to take the lead on this? We have any staff input?
Just briefly, sir, this site does, is consistent with, or the annexation is consistent with state statutes. It meets all of the level of service standards that are required, and it is within the proposed annexation, future annexation area, and staff does support this. It was sent to the county, and we have received no comments from them.
All right, and I have no cards on this. I'm assuming nobody else in the community wants to speak on this, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 13, 2023, first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion? I'm off, yeah.
I just want to welcome everyone to this preemption of welcoming everyone to the city. We obviously love annexation, and this is just another little chunk to add to our land holdings of the city, and we really appreciate you doing this, and keep moving south, will you? you?
Bert? Kind of a no-brainer? Dana?
I'm good.
I mean, I think the Catifumo team is pretty much ingrained in our community, so this is just another feather in our cap to bring this particular Marina into something that's going to be fabulous for the city. So I am 100% in support of it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance carries four zero. Thank you. Now, we have a quasi judicial on Resolution 38, 2023. Renata, would you read the title, please?
Resolution 38, 2023. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a planned community development, PCD amendment, to the Avenir PCD master plan to modify internal development parcel boundaries, identify locations for community dog parks, and update the development standards for the Avenir PCD, the subject site being 4,763 acres, more or less, and generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
I'm going to open the hearing. I have an expertise.
I do. I spoke to Ken Tuma.
None for me.
The other day.
Dana?
None.
And I have none as well. Ken, thank you very much. You've been sworn in.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio. I've been sworn in. My address is 610 Clemada Street, West Palm Beach. Thank you for having me this evening. This is the first of three items, or actually four items for Avenir this evening. What is in front of you right now is one of two PCD amendments. This PCD amendment is an amendment to add dog parks to the subject site and to do some boundary modifications to the parcel. I'm going to walk you through, this is a very short presentation. It's about four slides, and we'll move through this fairly quickly. So the item, you're all familiar with Avenir, its location and what it's approved for. The subject site in front of you this evening, the requests are to do a boundary adjustment, and the boundary adjustment occurs here in the agricultural area. Location of future dog parks are identified, and then we've also updated development standards as part of this process. First, the master plan amendment between parcel A and H is being modified, located here in the southwest corner. And kind of pulling that up on the screen, you'll see that it's curved in the front and top of it. I have no idea why that curve is there, to be honest with you, when we did the master plan 10 years ago. What we're doing, and the request is to straighten that up to allow parcel A, which is a future POD 18, to have a good access point. The POD 18 will also have a connection to the agricultural area, pedestrian connection. That POD 18 will probably be in front of you, hopefully in September, so we're moving fairly forward, fairly quickly with that process also. Parcel J here in the bottom-left corner, and this is what the new master plan will look like. Dog parks, we've identified the locations of three dog parks within the community. For a frame of reference, down here in the southeast corner, this is Town Center. If you recall, during the approval of the Town Center, that is the general location of where the hotel is. We're proposing a dog park there. Up here in the north side, this is where the pump station is, the stormwater pump station, and we're proposing a dog park there. And then also, in the southwest corner, we're proposing a dog park as part of the agricultural area in parcel J. The updates to the development standards are to allow for dog parks, and allow for dog parks, we've had to make some modifications. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead one slide. To allow some modifications to the overall approval. First thing, we're asking to update parcel H to allow for a major conditional use, to allow for a potential, I'm sorry, my slides are out of order this evening. So, here we go. I'm just going to walk through. So in the dog park itself, the standards that we're requesting are to modify, to allow for the dog parks. It'll be a minimum size of 3,000 square feet. It'll also require amenities for the dogs and the other items for humans, duplicability shades, structures, and water, and things like that for those three dog parks. In regards to the changes that we're proposing, we're requesting that being added to parcel J and parcel H is the ability to have a restaurant. We are working on a farm-to-table concept. While we're not there yet, the farm-to-table concept potentially could go on parcel H. We're requesting to add in community gardens. We're having the opportunity to potentially have a restaurant without drive-through on both parcel J and H. And with that, my presentation is over. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I have anybody here wishing to speak on this item. I have no comment cards. I will close the hearing. Say again? Oh, I'm sorry, Natalie, yeah.
Vice Mayor, nothing else to add? Ken covered everything in his presentation.
Okay, thank you. Then let me jump ahead. I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution 38, 2023, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 38, 2023.
I'll second it.
Bring it back for discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments on dog parks?
I just want to say thank you again. We've had so many requests for dog parks in the western communities. In fact, a couple months ago, we were talking about it when somebody brought it up as a request, so I really appreciate you guys adding this. It's way, having sat on an HOA board with residents wanting to do one in our community, we tried. It was a nightmare, insurance wouldn't insure us. It was very hard to do after the fact, but it's easy to do when it's in the planning effort. So I remember Rose sitting in the audience saying, "Yeah, we possibly can do it, but we're not there yet," and here we are a couple months later, and you guys brought it before us, so we really appreciate that. And dogs are such a compatible, or a dog park is a compatible use with a stormwater pump area, so perfect transitional use. Good job.
Right. Bert?
My only comments are the restaurant, no drive-through. That's probably what we want out there for community orientation, meetings, people hanging out, live, learn, work, play, whatever you want to say, needs to be out there, so I'm all on board. Thank you.
I don't have any comments. I think it's a great addition to the development.
Well, 4,000 homes brings 8,000 dogs, so we need a place to put them. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution carries four zero. Resolution 39, 2023, Renata, can you read the title, please?
Resolution 39, 2023. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for a golf course maintenance facility on approximately 11.5 acre parcel within the Panther National Master Plan located in the northwest portion of the development area of the Avenir Planned Community Development, PCD, which is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, the hearing is open. Expertise, Ken?
In an effort to be fully transparent, I'm going to ex parte Ken Tuma because we had a conversation, not 100% in for this, but it was mentioned, so I'm just going to say ex parte.
None.
None.
And I have none as well. George, name and address for the record, please, and have you been sworn in?
Good evening, council members. My name is George Missimer with Cotler &amp; Hearing. I have been sworn in, and our office address is 1934 Commerce Lane, Jupiter, Florida. So we're here tonight on behalf of the property owner and applicant, Centaur Palm Beach Owner LLC, talking about the latest addition to Panther National for a new golf maintenance facility. Now, if you haven't received your invitation for a free round of golf, don't worry, I didn't get mine either, but we'll get there.
We're not ex parting that.
You're well familiar with our development team, consistent with the most recent applications. We've really enjoyed the process, working with city staff, the collaboration and effort to bring forth the best projects that we can has been fantastic, and this was known. Before you tonight is Resolution 39, 2023, for the new golf maintenance facility at Panther National. A brief reminder, Panther National is a PUD located within the Avenir PCD in the northwestern portion. We do have several approvals for Panther National, including the master plan, residential pods 12, 13, and 14, as well as site plan approval for the golf course and the main entry spine road. We do have several other applications in review right now that we're looking to bring forward in the near future. The maintenance facility is located on the Lifestyle Center. Just important to note that the maintenance facility has always been envisioned and planned to be on this parcel, and it is part of the approved master plan. Looking at the site plan specifically, there are three structures proposed. The two narrower buildings on the northern and western portions are open-air, covered storage areas for equipment and materials, while building three, the larger warehouse-type building, is primarily for the storage of equipment, and then there's an office space for employees. Backing up real quickly, the maintenance facility is located on the Lifestyle parcel. As we had mentioned, we are not subdividing this parcel. It is going to be site planned for the entire parcel. When we come back for the approval of the Lifestyle Center, we'll be amending the site plan to include the balance of the Lifestyle Center. We have done, you know, preliminary designs, we've been working in the background on that Lifestyle Center. We just haven't brought an application forward, but we have not pigeonholed ourselves by any means, so we have plenty of flexibility with the rest of the parcel to make sure we can make the best project possible. Brief description, overall parcel size is a little over 11 and a half acres. We meet all development criteria. We're not asking for any exceptions or waivers, and we're exceeding many of those development criteria. Looking at access, something that was planned partially in the beginning for why we chose this portion of the property to put the maintenance facility, the primary entrance for maintenance vehicles and employees, they do not have to drive through the main gates of the community. They have their own separate gated access entry. We have an access specific for the maintenance vehicles to access the golf course towards the north, and we've made that path specifically wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles in the case they need a secondary egress point. Additionally, we've worked with the adjacent residential POD 10 developer and the city to make sure that we had an additional emergency access point to the neighboring residential Briefly, the maintenance vehicles would access the golf course through that northern access path, as I had mentioned. The paths are lighted per city requirements, and we've paid particular attention to those light poles to ensure that they would not cause any new hardship to any neighboring properties. So in the height of the light poles, we've made sure to limit that. Additionally, the surrounding buffers, which were approved as part of the master plan, specifically adjacent to the maintenance facility, it's an expanded buffer 25 feet wide on the Panther National property, and then 25 to 30 feet wide on the adjacent residential developments. Within that buffer is a expanded berm, as well as a wall, and supplemental native landscaping to really provide effective screening of the maintenance facility. In addition to the perimeter buffer screening, we have designed internal buffering of the life balance of a Lifestyle parcel, and that would be installed at the time of the construction of the maintenance facility, again, just to ensure a quality project and making sure that there isn't any impacts of the maintenance facility on the internal workings of Panther National. And that's really all we have for you tonight, so we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie or Brett, where are we at with this on?
Vice Mayor, no additional comments. George covered everything in his presentation. Thank you.
I don't have anybody wishing to speak on this item, nor do I have any comment cards. I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion in a second on Resolution 39, 2023, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 39, 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on this one, guys? Yes?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Marcy.
I just have a couple quick questions, and one is, I saw, I was reading about the hours of operation, and it seems like morning is a pretty busy time for this facility. Just kind of lightly touch on how we're protecting the POD 10 residents that are directly adjacent from noise or, you know, noisy activity, if there is any.
Absolutely, and it was a concern during the development review for the project. As I said, we did, we have paid particular attention to those buffering, to the buffering of the site through the expanded 25-foot buffer on the Panther National property, minimum 50-foot overall with the wall. So that does a lot to protect those adjacent residents. Additionally, a majority of the activity located on the maintenance facility parcel itself is really just moving equipment from that area to the golf course where it would be operated, so the actual noise level isn't as high as it would be if all the equipment was running on the maintenance property. So part of the operational facility is intended to do that.
And the buffer, obviously, from an aesthetic and a visibility aspect, I don't see any issues with that at all. It's very thick, and, you know, in Florida, it'll grow quite rapidly. I'm more, you know, thinking about noise, so would any repair being, would there be any repairs done? If so, is that internal to the buildings 100%?
Yeah, so standard maintenance and repairs of equipment would go inside that warehouse building, or even on the other side in those other structures that are there. So that's one way to mitigate the noise, but additionally, the buffer itself, while, like you said, it does scream visually, it also does mitigate for noise levels, specifically with the height of the berm and the wall and the dense landscaping with the trajectories of the various noises, it's able to block a lot of that from going to the residence.
Thank you.
Bert?
No. Good.
Dana?
No, I don't have anything. Excited to see it come, so it can help support the golf.
Agreed. I have no comment on it as well. Obviously, Panther National needs a maintenance facility with its golf course. So no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 42, 2023, Renata, please.
Resolution 42, 2023. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for a 491-lot residential, age-restricted, single-family home subdivision located at the northwest intersection of Avenir Drive and Panther National Boulevard on approximately 150.32 acres, known as POD 16, within the residential district, parcel A, of the Avenir Planned Community Development, PCD, which is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Hearing is open. Expertise, please.
I have an ex parte, Ken Tuma.
You can go to lunch every day?
No. No lunch at all.
None for me.
That's it? Okay, and I have none. So, Ken, I know you've been sworn in. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Let's go for it.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Thank you for having me. Parcel 16 is in front of you this evening. It is a parcel of land on the western side of Avenir. It's 491 units. It's an age-restricted community. It's a mix of lot sizes of 50 and 60 feet wide, lot sizes, and a total of 491 units. Interesting enough, here we are in 2023. This is on the western half of Avenir, which is two miles away down Avenir Drive. Pretty significant changes occurred out there over the last couple of years. I know you're all familiar with the site and the plan, and George just articulated what was going on in the golf course, but POD 16 is located here on the west side, adjacent to what is known as Mecca Farms. It's up against the west side of the project. It's on the north side of Avenir Drive. Avenir Drive starts way over here and comes around, and it's two miles to the west. So here's the plan that's in front of you. The request this evening is only the horizontal approvals. It's a site plan approval. In the future, the property will come before you for architectural approval, which will include clubhouses, guardhouses, landscape plans for the individual lots, and also the architecture for the homes. I do know that the subject site is under contract, while I'm not going to announce that this evening, there is a contract purchaser for the site who will be submitting an application fairly soon. Again, the parcel is a mix of 50 and 60-foot wide lots, 130 feet deep, 491 units. We have 11 acres of open space above what is required. There are 102 on-street parking spots, which are not part of your code. We find it's an age-restricted community, that's important to have additional parking. They're spread throughout the entire site, and again, it's an age-restricted community. Here it is in kind of a global concept plan for the site. While this isn't the exact plan, you'll notice that it's located here, along, adjacent to the Mecca Farm site, just south of where George was talking about, the golf course, and then a future residential POD here that will be coming forth in the near future. The site has the access points, there are three access points to the site, kind of starting in the center, the main access point off of Avenir Drive. This is the gate for the residents, also for the guests and everyone coming into the community. This main entrance. community, this main entrance point. But it's important to note kind of where this is located because this is Avenue Drive and Avenue Drive on the west, north, and Panther are all eighty-foot right-ofways. When you go around the roundabout, this road actually terminates. It does not go across the Mecca Farms. That road will become a smaller right-ofway, a fifty-six foot wide right-ofway. But what that also does, it basically becomes the entrance to the two parcels that are here. So you'll notice that the access point into, the main access point into this community right here is located off a road that will only serve two parcels of land. So as you pull into the site, the first entrance point is the main entrance point. It'll be a gated community, it's age-restricted. It'll be gated community, significant amount of stacking that meets your code requirements, but also that additional stacking and turn lanes associated with the road coming down. The next gate is off of Panther National on the right-hand side of the screen. That gate will be for residents only. That gate will have an access point that will allow the residents to leave, a left turn lane coming up on Panther to allow residents to enter into the site, and that it will also have a right turnout. And then on the west side of the site, against the far west side, there is an additional access point for residents and it's an emergency entrance point. Then further to the west, you'll notice that there's an access point to this area, which is a fire break. It's an access point that allows your fire trucks and driver along the conservation area to come in to take care of any problems. Also, as George indicated, we were working on Pod ten for Avenue, which you'll see hopefully in a few months. Well, there's also another emergency access point connecting Panther National here in the north part of this in case of emergency. So that's the general access items for the site. A little bit about the amenities, age-restricted communities have lots of amenities, bocce, pickleball, all the usual things that you would expect in a community, though it's not proposed yet. First thing, the clubhouse site itself, when you pull into the community, there's a five-point-eight-four acre parcel of land that's dedicated for a clubhouse. For a frame of reference, Regency, which is the project that Toll Brothers is doing down the road, almost exactly the same size. So same concept, same design, or not same design, same concept, same land area, it'll be a completely different design. Another key thing on kind of the entrance way, when you come in, your staff had a really good point and a good design catch. They said, hey, typically we do five-foot sidewalks and we have a street fee program. Your staff suggested and our client agreed that we should make that this road here, which is around the clubhouse, and the main center should be something different. It has eight-foot wide sidewalks. It has more significant landscaping and the termination of that road. This is kind of a blow-up of the entry feature in the clubhouse area. That clubhouse will come back before you. This is not an approval for the clubhouse. Here are the sidewalks, it's identified, and larger sidewalks, the connection points. Another good point that your staff had on the west side, because this is an age-restricted community, people are going to be walking to the clubhouse, driving their golf cart, however they want to get there, we added a pedestrian bridge here to make a connection so it's easier to get from east to west. Also, as a part of the requirements, a twenty-foot landscape buffer will be required upon when the clubhouse comes before you adjacent to the residential area. So it's kind of set the standards of what's going to happen when you see the clubhouse in the future. On-street parking identified here in blue, there's one-hundred-and-two spots spread throughout the community. So there are other areas within the community. Up here in the northwest corner is Park Number One. Park Number One has bocce. It has bocce. Don't ask me, I really don't know. Though this is a year I can move in. So, okay, so, thank you. So two-seat game tables, places to sit. Park Number Two is a little less, the Park Number One is an active site, Park Number Two is a passive site, has more passive swings, recreation, yoga spaces. But also, those aren't the only parks. There are amenities spread throughout the community, kind of little polka parks. In fact, you can see the unique sun dials and specialty pavers, these round balls and other items throughout, spread throughout the community. There of course, we mentioned that there would be eight thousand dogs a few minutes ago. Of course, we'll have dog stations here for the eight hundred dogs that'll be part and parcel to this project. There'll also be benches and swings and gardens, all kinds of neat stuff for retirees. This is just a quick sketch of what the bridge is going to look like across the water. On the west side, this was a great, a good question, your staff brought it up, your forester brought it up, what's it going to look like along the west side? Because it is adjacent to Mecca Farms and no one knows exactly what Mecca Farms is going to be west of there. Well, there is, we have a significant conservation area. Just for a frame of reference, this section here is the rear yard of these houses. You'll notice that there's a fire break, then it goes down the grade, and then there's a significant buffer here that goes across. There's actually another buffer in that preserve area. So a significant amount of landscaping, one of the requirements that of course your staff put onto the community is that half the landscape on the south side as we build it has to be put in up front and as we move to the next phase, all the landscaping has to be put up front. And the northern boundary adjacent to what George was talking about for Panther National, there is a required buffer there on the Panther National side. It's a twenty-five foot buffer. The parcel, this parcel will be matching that side with twenty-five foot buffer also creating a significant separation. Lots of landscaping on the project, I'm not going to walk you through it, but we have a great design that's consistent with Avenue. So the request on landscaping, we're significantly above the requirements. As I said earlier, we're significantly above the open space requirements and as an age-restricted community with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Brett and Natalie, we have any input from the city side?
Sorry, sir?
Go ahead and do.
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the, one of the items we heard that potentially how we could help speed slow traffic down along the west side, one of the items that we talked about, we've kind of talked with staff about it too, kind of figured out what the best situation, how to resolve that is, and we're going to continue to work with staff, but there's no doubt that we should be able to add at least one stop sign. We've been working with the city engineer probably in this location to slow that traffic up, was a comment from one of your, from one of your city council members about potentially slowing it up and working with staff and the team here. I think it makes sense and we're willing to do it. We're going to work with the city engineer to make sure we meet all the criteria.
Very well. Brett, Natalie?
No further comments, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
I don't have any cards on this, I don't think I have anybody wanting to speak on the matter.
I just have one question for Ken.
Hold on, we're not there. We're not there yet.
We don't have to vote on it, I can ask one question, can't I?
When we're open for discussion, right now you're in public hearing.
God, you're so mean.
So now one for you, mister? All right, anyway, hold on. I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four-two twenty-two-three.
I'll second.
Speak away.
I just have one simple question.
But just, it wasn't time.
One simple question.
Go for it.
How many age-restricted units now will be built in there with this one to date?
So this one is four-hundred-and-ninety-one and I believe the other one's around four-sixty, so I think the number's right around nine-hundred and round numbers.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah. It's very exciting.
Very good.
And they're selling, the Toll Brothers are selling really well.
But that's a, that's a nice mix. You don't usually hear of a number that large, so it's nice to see that, separate communities.
And the other thing, I'm sorry, council member primoroso, I should have indicated, one of the important things to recognize is age-restricted communities have a different traffic generation. It's almost a third of what a standard house is. So you're also seeing that too as part of this. Thank you.
That's why I asked the question, Ken. I wanted to get that out of you.
Yes, sir.
I feel better now.
Thank you.
Dana?
It's a great project. You know, I've been through it now and I'd love to see the whole project coming together and more pods coming through. Quick question about the gate access. So there's one guardhouse, correct? And then there's a residential gate?
Yes, so first thing, the guardhouse will come in as a separate approval down the road when the contract purchaser makes an application, but yes, there'll be a main gate right here. There'll be a resident-only, let me pull it up in a bigger view here if I can. Okay, don't try to get tricky. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, so this is.
Come on.
Okay, so basically, there's a main gate and. It's not, it's really finicky tonight. There's a main gate and this is the main gate for the site here, and basically there's an access point, so you have the resident-only gate on the right-hand side, the guest gate on the left-hand side, so this is one of the entrance points. On the right-hand side over here is a secondary access point and entrance point, but this is for residents only. This will be kind of like the FOB system where you'll have access. And then the third point is over here on the west side, which will be an egress, meaning leaving only for the residents, but it will be able to be opened in an emergency situation by fire trucks and other items.
Okay, and that second access point for just the residents with the key fob, can anybody get out that way?
Yes, yes. It's ingress and egress.
Anybody can get, anybody, they don't have to be a resident to get out.
No, anybody can get out.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Marcy?
Yes, I have just a few questions slash comments, just to continue the comments that Dana made or the questions that Dana brought up. The resident-only gate, does that have signage on Panther National Boulevard saying resident only?
Yeah, we will as part of the site, there's an overall signage package for the community, so we'll identify that.
Okay, you know, obviously to be proactive so people don't have to use, although I see you didn't turn around.
We do have a turnaround there also.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, number one, Yogalan, that's pretty cool. Haven't seen that in a while, so unique, simple, and I think that's great. I like the pedestrian activities, the ballpark, very good. I did bring up, I'm the one that brought up the speeding and I appreciate you making that concession to add a stop sign. I'd really like to see two on that north-south road and at least one on that east-west road from the entrance. Speeding is always an issue in every community and it's so much easier to add stop signs at a stop intersection than prior to, prior to, while it's in the planning section or planning stage than after the fact when you have to, you know, go through that safety protocol and flashing lights, et cetera. So if you can work with staff on that, I would really appreciate it and I do appreciate that concession. The other question that I had was in regards to the back-to-back lots and that's the reason that we had the conversation. I don't know if, one of my comments is I want to prevent people using those back-to-back lots and if you can go to the site plan, the area where there's landscape and a nice open space area, although it's, when I compared it to the drainage plan or the engineering plan, it is a drainage area, so we're draining to the back. The landscape is beautiful, it's lush, and I don't understand that because you can't see it because it's blocked from the residential. So I would really like an opportunity for you to work with staff on kind of relooking at that area and maybe consolidating it to land, you know, one nice buffer in the middle to buffer both, you know, both of those back-to-back lot areas and to prevent people from using that as a, you know, a dog run, a pedestrian pathway. And, you know, that area is very walkable. It's beautiful, but if you can do that, I would appreciate that. And Natalie, I brought that up in my, in the agenda review.
If there's minor modifications that can be easily done with staff, we can work with the applicant and look at that. I'm pretty sure that the landscape plan provides for flexibility. I think the intent is to provide for an adequate buffer so that you don't have the back-to-backs right there, but you have a certain amount of landscaping, a certain amount of shifting is acceptable.
Yeah, and absolutely, and I totally am supportive of that buffer. I think it's great and it's beautiful. It's just a waste to have the tiering visible from the middle, not the residential lots. It didn't make any sense to me.
Understood, yeah. The challenge, of course, is a stormwater pipe that's there. We're going to work our way through that and appreciate the comment.
Perfect, thank you.
We good? I had said, this could be Brad or Natalie or Ken. Were we not consistently with the eight-foot wide sidewalks throughout Avenue or why was this one smaller and now we made it bigger? Because I was, we were kind, with the connectability thoughts, I thought we were going eight throughout.
Thank you, I should have said that a little better, a little clearer. So first thing, on Avenue Drive, which is the east-west road, the main road here, it'll be the standard Avenue sidewalks on that, which is on one side a twelve-foot wide multimodal path, on the other side is an eight-foot path. Coming into the community at both exits are two eight-foot paths on both sides, consistent with all the other projects. Then internal to the, internal sidewalks, the internal sidewalks throughout the rest of the community are five feet. So what your staff suggested, it was a very good point, because the amenity center is going to be a gathering area, we made the sidewalk adjacent to the clubhouse larger at eight feet. So traditionally throughout Avenue, it's a five-foot sidewalk in the pods, but in this case, we're inside the pod, we're actually made some of the sidewalks eight feet.
Yeah, I can just imagine with the amount of people that are going to be in there and walking and the dogs and the golf carts and, you know, once we get the community center going and the public goes in, in a five-foot sidewalk, it's just going to be like I-95 at five o'clock in Boca. So, but anyway, thank you very much for that. Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution forty-two twenty-two-three carries four-zero. Resolution forty-three twenty-two-three, Renata, can you read the title, please?
Resolution forty-three twenty-two-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida approving a planned community development PCD amendment to the Avenue PCD master plan to relocate parcel C, Economic Development Parcel, to the area northwest of the intersection of Coconut Boulevard and Northlake Boulevard to relocate five-hundred-thousand square feet of professional office PO use from parcel D, Workplace, to parcel C, Economic Development Parcel, to modify internal development parcel boundaries within the PCD and to modify development standards and certain conditions of approval in resolution four twenty-sixteen, the Avenue PCD being generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Can I open the hearing? Expartes, guys? I know you met with Ken at lunch and all that stuff from church.
No lunch.
No lunch? Anybody?
None, nope.
I'll say Ken Tuma, yes.
Okay, and I have none? Ken, you're up again, my friend. I know you've been sworn in and you live here.
Yes, yes to all the above. Ken Tuma with Urban Design, here tonight on behalf of Avenue for a PCD amendment. I'm just going to spend a minute talking about the background primarily for Council Member Middleton and Council Member Primoroso, who were not on the board at the time of the approval of Avenue, at least I don't think you were, Council Member Primoroso, I'm slipping. So.
Go ahead.
You were, oh, failure on my part.
Great, we can save that time.
I'm going to hang out with Dana on this one, so go ahead. I'm going to come over here and sit with her and learn again.
Abbreviated.
Abbreviate, yes, so this will be very short. So basically, as part of the agreement, Avenue agreed to dedicate fifty acres of land and assign five-hundred-thousand square feet of its entitlements to the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Avenue did that, they assigned it to parcel C. What is in front of you this evening is a relocation of that fifty acres. Avenue will be giving an additional ten acres, so it'll be a total of sixty acres. And then the second part of that assignment will, Avenue will be assigning a half a million square feet of additional entitlements that it has onto the site. So the parcel will be entitled for one million square feet adjacent to Northlake Boulevard and will be sixty acres instead of fifty acres. Now, on some of the, on some of the items you'll see, you'll note it's sixty-point-six-five acres. The reason for that differential is there is a listation on the site that ultimately will be dedicated to the Community Development District managing that. I have a few slides just to walk you through of what's occurring. You all should be familiar with this slide by now. The next slide is the request. It is a master plan amendment. We are adding some roadway networks, development standards are being updated, and there are revised conditions of approval to effectuate what I started this conversation out with. So the subject site, this is the current, excuse me, this is the current master plan. You'll notice parcel C in the bottom right-hand corner. This is the new master plan as proposed. I'm going to walk you through the changes. The first change for the master plan amendment is relocating parcel C from the northeast corner of Avenue Drive and Coconut to Workplace D. So that will now become a parcel C. It's really important from a design standpoint, relocating that we think is a great idea. It gets it away from the residential uses, it separates it away from the residential uses and allows that five-hundred-thousand square feet to be relocated. Then that parcel will become parcel A, yellow, it'll become a residential parcel. And then parcel C, we're shifting five-hundred-thousand square feet from parcel D to parcel C. So that's where the one million square feet comes from. Also, as part of this, there is an addition of the roadway network going north to south through parcel D. That roadway network is important. We've also added some road sections to allow for that roadway network to occur. And then finally, on the southwest corner of the site, parcel J, where parcel J is being changed to parcel A, which is a residential. being changed to Parcel A, which is a residential parcel. So that's the, kind of the big picture cleanup of what's happening with the master plan. So this is the new master plan, you can identity in front of you some of the road networks that are being proposed. This road actually goes through, Avenir will be constructing that roadway, Avenir will be constructing this north-south roadway, and will be allowing future connection to the parcel which you recently annexed immediately to the west. Here are the road sections, I'm not going to walk you through the road sections, but basically similar road sections within the rest of Avenir have been added as part of this design. Development standards, so as part of this, to effectuate it, we need to modify the development standards, so we've changed some things around a little bit. We've updated the development standards to allow for the shifting of location. Also, in the development standards, there was a transitional buffer, transitional buffer between commercial or between non-residential and residential. It's no longer necessary because we've moved everything away from the residential, it's all compacted into the site, separated by Avenir Drive and Coconut, so everything comes together in one spot, instead of having potentially a half million square feet adjacent to Parcel 9. The conditions of approval as revised, Condition 3 and Condition 37, there are several that are amended and restated again to effectuate what's in front of you. What these development order conditions do, basically, they modify the conditions to make sure we're consistent with Condition Number 2 in the development order, which is in essence the county's proportionate share agreement. So what these two changes do is they say, you shall not exceed the cumulative AMPM peak hours as set forth in Condition 2. Condition 2 is a condition that limits us specifically to the traffic that was approved for this site as part of the overall development order. The number 30, Condition 37 is modified similarly, reflects back to a condition, again, all to effect this change. There are other, several other reinstated conditions in the backup for this site, I'm not going to go through those this evening. Again, those are all to make the, to make this project work to come about in regards to how the language works. So everything is consistent to allow us to effectuate this proposed change. With that, that is the end of my presentation, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Brad, Natalie, where are we at?
Vice Mayor, Ken covered everything in his presentation.
He does that, doesn't he? I don't have any comment cards on this, so I'm assuming no one from the public wants to speak on this item. I'm going to close the hearing, I need a motion and a second to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 432023.
Second.
Discussion, where are we at with this, guys? Marcy, you want to go?
I'm good.
You're good?
I think it's great.
Bert?
I've got a couple of comments, but I, none, you can sit down, we're good, buddy. No, staff addressed my questions on Tuesday with regards to, really no disruption of existing plans in the residential district parcel A by moving more resi in there, so that works out fine. And then the number of dwelling units stays the same for the entire project, so no additional permits for that, so we're all good, appreciate it, thank you.
No, all the questions that I had during agenda review were answered, and Ken, I appreciate you taking the time to bring me up to speed because it's a big project, it's years and years and years of information and history there, so I appreciate it, and it totally makes sense, so thank you.
Absolute no-brainer for me, so there's no more discussion on this, can I get a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 432023 carries four zero. Resolution 452023, Renata, please?
Resolution 452023, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida Approving a Planned Unit Development (PUD) Amendment to Construct a New 7,000-Square-Foot Office Building with Associated Parking Lot Modifications and Landscaping Within the Donald Ross Village (PUD), which is located on the south side of Donald Ross Road and bound by Central Boulevard on the west and North Military Trail on the east, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes."
Open the hearing, and we need expertise on this.
None.
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 None for me as well? Hello, Don, Mr.?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Donaldson hearing with Kotler in hearing.
Have you been sworn in?
I have been sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Address is 1934 Commerce Lane, Suite Number 1, Jupiter, Florida, and I am here pinch hitting for Nicole Plunkett tonight, who is being sworn in over at the chamber installation event this evening, so glad to be here. We're here tonight to talk about a 7,000-square-foot addition to the Donald Ross Village, a professional office building, and associated parking, landscaping, and signage. Our entire project team is here, including the master developers, the Brocks, Jared and his brother are here tonight, Derek, as well as our architects, Bruce Thomas, and our civil engineer, Mr. Fagan, is also here to join us this evening. The request is a part of the Donald Ross Village mixed-use development, it's a 45-acre site with both residential and commercial. This was, has been constructed for quite some time, located south of Donald Ross, in between military and central. It's a beautiful center that's been exceptionally well-executed in its development and is maintained by the Brock family in just excellent condition. We're specifically talking tonight about a previously approved out parcel, which is about .312 acres, located as parcel, or identified as Parcel D, and that is a, will be a fee simple out parcel. The site maintains a mixed-use, land use, as you can see, the parcel is highlighted in yellow, and so we're within the mixed-use portion of the overall site. The site today currently is encumbered with parking, that's an interim plan that was approved by Resolution 18, 2015, several years ago, when the out parcels were relocated. When the center was originally built, there were two out parcels flanking the entrance, one was Parcel C and Parcel D. I know many of you probably remember that approval, so this is an older aerial. In 2015, Parcel C was moved further to the east to accommodate where the Dunkin' Donuts is today, and then it was turned into parking, here's another view of that. This is the approved master plan, that was approved as a part of the most recent revision in, excuse me, in 2015 by Resolution 18, 2015. And we're modifying Parcel D today. Parcel D was designated as a 5,000-square-foot bank financial institution, and we're modifying that to a, which was a single-story, to a two-story professional office building that will become the home of one of our local law firms, Cunningham or Dominic Cunningham and Yaffa. They're located right now in the, right at the, I guess, where Carmine's is, right on PGA Boulevard, Sovereille Harbor area, they've been there for many, many years. They're all residents of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, live very closely nearby, and so, you know, this is really their dream to be able to be here as a part of the community. And it's also just a welcome daytime use that will occur here that will support the overall center. So as we noted before, in 2015, Parcel C was moved over to the east to accommodate the Dunkin' Donuts, and then that became parking. Parcel D remained the same, and is entitled for the, for the 5,000 square feet of professional office. Parking was accommodated at that time, there's some additional parking that were, that is there, and with the proposed addition of the office building, will actually continue to exceed the parking requirements by about six spaces that are there. So a couple of key points to point out, there were 713 spaces that are required, there were 18, 100, or 811 spaces that were provided, so the interim plan provided some additional parking, but it was always intended by that resolution to be an interim component. So here's the site as it exists today, out parcel D there is highlighted, and then this is what we are proposing to build. So it's a two-story, 7,000-square-foot office building. The two-story configuration really fits very well, as identified in the staff report, it really allows us a lot of additional landscape area, it provides some variation of architecture within the overall facility, and enables us to maximize parking and have a better pedestrian system. And you'll see that in the more detailed layout that I will provide. And as I noted, because of the two-story configuration, we're actually able to exceed the number of spaces that were contemplated in the original master plan, or the most recently approved 2015 master plan. So this is an illustrative plan integrated into high-resolution aerial photography, and you can see the proposed site, the green space and landscape that's able to be preserved as a part of it. Couple key points to point out is the building is oriented to the north. It is clearly a four-sided building, so it has, you know, all four sides, mechanical equipment is on the roof, not on the ground, don't have loading areas because it's professional office, but it's oriented so that it will engage the north, so when residents or residents and visitors come in, you know, they'll see the entrance, but there's also a design consideration there is that the majority of the parking, the majority of the less frequently used parking is along that northern perimeter. And so we, by design, we specifically put the parking, the office building only requires 35 parking spaces, and we have actually more of that on the northern, northern boundary of the site. So that was done by design, so that's where that entrance tower is. Just zooming in a little bit, you'll see that we've created some interesting outdoor spaces that have gone into this, this building. There is a rooftop terrace with a trellis with vines, we've, we've developed a green approach to the screening of the mechanical equipment on the roof as well, in consideration for that. And then there's a lower-level terrace right on top of the first floor that's accessed directly from the second floor. Again, you know, why do we do these things? You know, the, you know, the law firm, all of us businesses, we compete for talent, and outdoor space post-COVID is, is just something that's very much so valued. So it's just a great space, and will get a lot of value for the, for the users and for the law firm. Landscaping, we've really spent a lot of attention to landscaping. You'll, if you went through the plant list, you'll notice that the species are consistent and compatible with what's located within Donald Ross Village, but we've also tried to create a lot of interest in variety, not only in creating some interesting flowering plants, but we've utilized different types of palms. So the previous landscape plan had a lot of, had some thatch palms, but we used multiple varieties of thatch palms. It had some varieties of some of the various Icades, but we provided other varieties, you know, in order to really create something that was special. And you'll note, all the way around the building, there are paver walkways that are tied into the overall pedestrian system, and so this will be a great space, not only for the, for those that are visiting the law office, but anyone walking by and utilizing the parking, just a great opportunity to enjoy the outdoor environment. Bruce Thomas is the architect, they're located right here on PGA Boulevard, very, very talented, so Alan is here with us today, and you can see the building is very nice, we work very closely with staff and with the, with the master developers, so the building has the elements and the color palettes and the lighting sconces that match the, the overall center, but yet we do have some elements that enable us to create some unique diversity and articulations. The railings match, the light fixtures match, so we think we've done a great job. There's some green wall elements, so right to the right of where it says Dominic Cunningham and Yaffa, that is a green screen wall that will have a pink Pandora vine on it, so it'll be very nice, really kind of playing up on the, on the landscape attention that we've provided to, to this particular site. And then, right inside the portico, as you're walking into the building, you'll see a wall there, that's one of the areas where we're looking for our, looking at applying our art in public places. That will come back as obviously a separate petition to you, but it'd be a great space that really would be very, very inviting and very visibly a focal point as you come into the community. Here's another view of that front elevation, you can see the arches, the articulation in the landscaping, a few additional views of how that building will work. Again, very, very nice. The Brock family, as you're well aware, are very particular operators, they obviously developed and operate Alton, have other centers here in Palm Beach Gardens, they're keepers of their real estate, and so they're very particular about the tenants that they bring into their center individually, but also, in this particular case, this is a parcel which will be owned by the law firm, and so they paid great attention, everything's been done with a great amount of attentionality, as they do with all of their centers. And so this is a great addition, and we're really excited to, to be here. All the materials tie together, we worked very closely with staff, Randy Hansen, your architect on the planning, zoning and appeals board, and a lot of different details integrated into the overall project, palettes tie in with the master requirements of the, of the community. And with that, more than happy to answer any questions, our team is here, and they're certainly available to answer any questions that you have as well.
Don, Natalie, where are we at?
Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 45, like all petitions, the DRC has thoroughly reviewed this petition, it was also unanimously approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, and there are no waivers being requested for this petition either, and we are happy to answer any questions, thank you.
And I have no comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the hearing and go bring it back for a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 452023.
Second.
Bert, how do you feel? Questions, comments?
I think it's a beautiful building. The only question I have is around the building itself, are there any reserved spots for the firm during the day, or is it all still open parking?
All open parking, no reserved parking.
And with regards to city policy, we don't allow canopies to be built for covers, to covered parking spots or anything within that area?
They would have to go through a process through staff, and just based on the nature and the location and the parking, we would look very closely to make sure that these parking spaces remain open to the public. The uses are very complimentary in nature, so long as it's functioning structured, we would let, we would, the applicant would be subject to the city's code, which requires to come before the city staff for review and approval, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I had, nice job, Don.
Thanks, sir.
Dana?
I don't have any questions, it's a, it's a nice building, and I had similar questions, and it was, they were all addressed during agenda review, so thank you.
Marcy?
Of course I have questions.
Marcy, questions?
Actually, Bert asked one of my questions, which was kind of, I was going to ask if the lease for the law firm asked for reserved parking, because that's something that a lot of leases would ask from time to time, so that was one of them.
The, the, there is a, there is an obligation in the overall intent of the purchase and sale agreement that the parking for the visitors and for the lawyers be on the north side, because some of those spaces get very little use, and so it's very intentional, and why the building was designed that way, so they can park right there and walk right on in.
Yeah, and I agree with my fellow council members, the building is beautiful, I live right next door to this, so I probably frequent this center very, well, I know I do frequent it very often, my vets there, love the Dunkin' Donuts, I was actually the one that, one of the people that mentioned the stacking years and years ago when Dunkin' Donuts was moved and planned for there, because I knew it was going to be not an issue, but I knew that there was going to be a lot of cars in that stacking area, so staff provided surplus stacking. And it still has a line and blocks 10 parking spaces every morning there. So parking is a concern to me, because as I frequent the restaurants, I know that, you know, it is some, they're always, everyone's always looking for parking there. There are a lot of restaurants, they're very popular, it's a very good problem to have, so I'm happy about that in one part, but I also am a little bit concerned for, for this site as it relates to parking. But again, beautiful building, landscape, done a great job with the design, I have no issues with that part, I just want to make sure if there is reserved parking or valet in the future, that it's only for the surplus six parking spaces and that's it, so that, because obviously reserved parking takes away from the mix of the parking and the matrix for that, so I just want to make sure that that's going to be.
We agree with you very much, and Derek and his team will tell you, you know, they're very particular about how they manage their centers and what their expectations are of the tenants and anybody that's in there, so they agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, and then how many employees does this law firm have?
Sasha?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five employees.
Great, so that's, that's a good answer.
And they're not all there. They're not, they're not all there at, at one time.
Right, no, I know, yeah.
But, and again, Gardens, Gardens resident, so they're not driving as far.
Right, and from managing an office building, I know that attorneys work late hours, and so they're not, they're, they are not leaving right at five when the restaurants get busy, so there is an overlap of time, so that's why I have a concern. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's addressed, so I appreciate.
There is, I mean, a lot of attorneys also work from home as well, and so the, the use is very complimentary. If they do stay in the evening, staff has looked at the analysis, there is a surplus. We do feel comfortable at this point with the parking.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Derek, nice to see you in a jacket.
I didn't know Fred Cunningham was here, but I saw him walking around the back, and I'm like, I've known Fred for probably thirty-five years. So I had concern with this building as, as well. It was just, the good thing is it's not a traffic attractor. I'm in that Donald Ross Village every day of the week and sometimes twice on the weekend, so it does, as a, as a citizen, you know, sometimes you drive in there and they're packed, but that, that northern parking area, you are absolutely, being truthful, it, it does sit vacant on the north end. So if Natalie's happy and John's happy with it, it, it will be, you know, it will be a nice addition to that area, but I think that might be built out at this point, who knows? But I'm, I think it's a good addition, it's a beautiful building. I know Fred is a, is a fabulous, you know, person in the community, so I support him, and I'm going to support this building as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have no comment cards. Oh, sorry, I will, sorry about, no more, no more discussion, guys. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty-three carries four-zero. Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, Renata?
Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, setting the date, time, and place of the first budget hearing, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
There we go. All right, I apologize about that. My PowerPoint froze for a second. Good evening again. My name is Arian Panzak, again, for the record, I am the Finance Administrator. Tonight, we have some good news that I think you'll be pleased with, which is our first official step in the annual budget adoption process. Resolution twenty-nine sets out to accomplish two things. It is the process in which we set the proposed maximum millage rate that may be levied in the upcoming tax year, and it also sets the date and time for the first public hearing that will be published in the proposed tax notices that are sent out to residents next month in August. So moving on to the exciting news. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the city manager proposes an operating millage rate of five point one-seven and a debt service rate of zero, which is two point eight percent less than the current year's rate of five point three-two. This is an eight point nine-four percent increase above the rollback rate of four point seven-four-five-six. You might ask how we are able to propose this. Well, we did just receive our final July one property evaluations, and they were significantly higher than what we were projecting in our ten-year forecast model from a year ago. So we are able to propose the five point one-seven rate and are projecting to maintain that rate through our ten-year forecast model. This is important to note because it has always been our goal to maintain a consistent and steady tax rate for our residents. This will ensure that most homesteaded properties will see little change in their property taxes for the upcoming year. So during our budget hearings, the millage rate can be lowered, but they cannot be increased above this five point one-seven without notifying each taxpayer by mail. So tonight, we are only setting the cap. And again, in August, the five point one-seven rate will be the rate used the property praiser sends out in those proposed tax notices. So over the past two years, the city has successfully recommended two consecutive tax reductions and paid off an outstanding general obligation bond that effectively eliminated our debt service millage in two thousand and nineteen. As a result, there has been a substantial overall decrease in our millage rate of seven point seven percent since two thousand and nineteen. It's pretty impressive. So in addition to this, the city must also notify the county of the date and time of our first public hearing as not to coincide with the county of the school board. The school board's hearing is set for September sixth, and the Palm Beach County School hearing is set for September seventh and the twenty-sixth. So staff recommends the first public, our first public hearing be held on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty-twenty-three. And one final note for tonight's presentation, in the coming weeks, we will be sending out a link to the proposed budget using our new interactive budget platform with OpenGov, and look forward to working with council in reviewing the proposed budget, as well as working with the Budget Review Board and the public. So staff recommends approval of Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, setting a maximum operating millage of five point one-seven, and setting the date and time for our first public hearing on September fifth, twenty-twenty-three, at six PM in city council chambers.
Thank you. I have no comment cards on this, so can I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, setting the maximum operating millage of five point one-seven, zero, 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 zero mills, and setting the date for our first public hearing on September fifth, twenty-twenty-three, at six PM in the council chambers.
Second?
We did that right. We always screw that up.
It's right in front of us. It's right in front of it, you can't not read it.
Oh, be surprised. Any discussion on this, sorry? Yeah?
Want me to start?
Go ahead, Bert.
No, I, I certainly think it's in the right direction, right? We continue the Carl and Marcy and staff's trend from last year to this year to continue to lower the millage rate. I just went back and looked at some history. Back in two thousand and eight, the millage rate was five point one-one, so we're getting closer to getting back to where we were fifteen years ago, which is pretty, pretty impressive. And the highest the millage rate has ever been that I've seen was back in two thousand and fourteen at five point seven-four, just on the operating side. So all good trends, going in the right directions. I'm looking forward to looking at the budget. I'd like to see no increase to residents, but I'll make that determination as I meet with you and staff and kind of go over everything, but I think it's impressive that we continue to do this. I know the county lowered their millage rate as well this week with our county commissioner, Marino, kind of spearheading that, so a lot of good trends for the residents. So I, I'm positive on the trend and happy to support this, and thank you for bringing a lower millage rate to start to us tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
No, I concur a hundred percent, and I want to thank you guys for, for doing this. Where there's a will, there's a way, and there has been a will from not just us, the council, but staff too, to lower the millage rate, and we really appreciate you guys taking a look at it from last year to this year and making it happen again. We really truly appreciate that, and, and again, I thank you.
Dana?
No, I think everyone said, you know, ditto from what Marcy and Bert said, so thank you.
You know, Bert, we were a four and one, because he always wanted to, he was trying and trying and trying to get the taxes to go lower and lower, and now that he's not here, they're going down. So, and I rubbed that in his face today, I actually did. So I, I did. It's not a lie. I should have done a quasi that I talked to Mark and rubbed it in his face, that taxes are going lower now that he's gone. Anyway, it's awesome to see that, you know, we're fiscally, you know, sound with the community, and we're all going to support stuff like this. So no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, resolution carries four-zero. It's our turn to talk. Or anybody have anything, or items of council discussion or interest? No?
I think, I think we said everything, and I appreciate the grand opening. We had a great time at the golf grand opening. Staff did an amazing job with that event. Even though it was hot, they really kept us hydrated.
It was hot?